Right.
Yeah, it's only thirty now.
Oh, yeah. That's pretty colored fish for the river. Yeah. Yeah. Yes, that's how, that's all you need right there.
And we are on the line now.
Not this early.
That's true.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Greenwood City Council meeting. This Monday, August the fourth, twenty twenty-five at seven P. M. Ms. Derry, would you call the robe, please?
Yes, I see Brown.
Here.
Ralph Maker.
Here.
Tim Terry.
Here.
Roger Rainwater.
Here.
Steve Tedford is absent, and Rod Powell is absent, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. If everyone would please stand, we'll begin our meeting tonight with a prayer led by our one and only Chief Brett Hobbs, and the pledge, followed by Chief Brian Stewart. Stewart, Brian.
Father, we just praise your name. We thank you for the many blessings on our community, and we pray for our citizens, and, Father, and I particularly pray for the mayor, give him the wisdom, the guidance, the hedge of protection over him, and let him lead our town the way you seek to. Father, we pray for our council members, our city attorney, our treasury, treasury, treasury clerk, and, Father, we just ask you, watch over them, bless them, and guard them, and be this thing in the air as community, amen.
Amen.
Let us allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, I would ask council to entertain approving the minutes for the July seventh, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting.
I make a motion to approve them as written.
Second.
You have a motion and a second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Recognitions and acknowledgements. Want to just comment that schools, as a reminder, school starts here in town on the eleventh, and just as a reminder, also for sure to watch out for students. That's our precious future, walking to school, crossing the streets, and please, please be aware of that and, and take note. Uh, one quick note on another issue or event coming up, the, our annual AML Arkansas Municipal League Planning Meeting will be here in Greenwood, the twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second at Bell Park. All the meetings will be there. We're gonna try to treat those folks like they're royalty, so let's be on our best behavior, Daniel. Anyway, so they're coming for, there's probably gonna be around sixty people, mayors, and their spouses, and councilmen, and treasury clerk. I'm having a problem, the treasury clerk. Those folks are gonna be in our town, and we're gonna try to treat them nice and, and show them the town. Visit with Coach Young, we're gonna take him to the G Mac, he's gonna speak to them, they get to see about ten minutes of some practice. We will be confiscating everyone's phone, because they cannot film those practices and take it back to their towns. That's a little joke, but it's true. Take them to the historical district, Cody Faber and Karen Efer will, will supply information over there, so hopefully have a good time with those folks and show them, treat them well. Uh, one more thing I want to do at this point, and if I could get our own Chief Hobbs to come up front with me.
That's a smattering of applause.
So Brett, for Chief, I'm sorry if you will stand here, I don't get to say.
We'll wait for the achievement before I clap.
So, uh, I don't, real quick, he is not retiring from the city of Greenwood, let's make perfectly clear, right? He's sixty years away from doing that. But what he has done this past weekend, I think officially, is retired from the military, taking twenty-one years of service. So we want to recognize him tonight. He did not invite us to his ceremony at the base, because he didn't want us there. You know, he, he's kind of a shy guy a little bit, doesn't like, like a lot of attention. I'll probably get in trouble for this, but can't spend that kind of time in the military and not be recognized. You are, I could, I could talk enough to cry here a little bit, and I'm trying not to, but you are such an asset to the city, which you became chief here. It's just wonderful, and I mean that, I don't mean that, look, it's, it's amazing. All the department heads know it, your department knows it, everything works well, you're just like a welding machine, and I appreciate that very much from the bottom of my heart. So you've done an amazing job for us, you're not leaving, but this is proclamation, on behalf of the people of Greenwood, the city of Greenwood, to publicly recognize Senior Master Sergeant Brett Hobbs. Whereas, Senior Master Sergeant Bradley Hobbs has served this nation with distinction and dedication as United States Air Force in Arkansas Air National Guard from June twenty, or two thousand four to August twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, sorry, culminating in over twenty-one years of honorable military service, and whereas in addition to his military service, and since two thousand and five, Brad Hobbs has proudly served the city of Greenwood as a police officer, rising through the ranks, protecting and serving this community with the same selflessness and honor that has defined his military career. And whereas Senior Master Sergeant Hobbs played a pivotal role in numerous statewide missions, including leading efforts during the largest domestic operations in Arkansas history, the civil unrest response in twenty twenty, exemplifying his steadfast leadership and commitment to the safety and well-being of Arkansas. And whereas Chief Hobbs, as we so affectionately call him, has answered the call of duty both at home and abroad, deploying in support of operations in Noble Eagle, in Harriet, in Zoll, and during freedom, serving with courage, professionalism, and integrity as a principal nation's security advisor. And now therefore I, Doug Kinswell, Mayor of the great city of Greenwood, Arkansas, hereby proclaim, Monday, August the fourth, twenty twenty-five, to Senior Master Sergeant Hobbs Day. And applause. Hey! Yes, I did recognize an extraordinary man on the occasion of the recovery of the United States Air Force in Arkansas Air National Guard. We honored him, his unwavering service to our nation, to our state, to our town, and we celebrate his remarkable legacy. He continues to lead, given under my hand on this day, along with the signature of our treasury.
Treasury.
Charlie there. There's your proclamation, sir. Add a fifty cents, a dollar and a half, we'll get you a cup of coffee. Uh, this is something I give out to all people that we give proclamations to, it's a key to the city, and I have the same little jokes that I have with one of them, small key, because we're rather small and saturated in Greenwood, we have small town. So there's your key to the city. You already have a key to every building in the world here, so that's really only, it's from the hearts of over ten thousand people, and I mean that seriously, seriously. I got a, I got a pen, because I know you don't have one. It's a little felt pen. Say the same thing again, I mean it, Greenwood's motto, logo is feels like home. It could not feel like home without Brett Hobbs, and I mean that in so many ways. And, one more thing I used to do, are you nervous?
No, I'm about to cry.
Oh. One thing I used to do, and I used to get in trouble for it, is, this is kind of odd for me to tell Chief, and you can now drive around for the rest till midnight tonight, as fast as you want to in Greenwood, Arkansas, and nobody's gonna bother you.
He does that anyway.
I know he does. Do exactly what you've been doing since you became chief or police officer. I love you, man, and I appreciate you. You don't, you don't get it how much I love you now, how much I appreciate what you do for the city and for our country, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speech? Okay, uh, best thing I've done, long time. Long time. Committee reports, uh, I've looked through, there's, I think, pretty much everybody submitted. Again, I say this all the time, if you don't see something you need to know, let me know, let Danielle know, we'll get it for you. Uh, I've really, I talked to, just so you know, Lisa Moore with the, the center was gonna try to come again tonight. She still has, her husband is not doing well at all, and she had some health issues herself, so, uh, try to get her soon to, to visit with everybody. Citizen forum, I do have a gentleman that has signed up, did you wanna, you wanna speak? Yeah, you did. Oh, well, Mr. Buddy Lloyd, if you'll come up and repeat your name and address, so we'll have it on record.
My name's Buddy Lloyd, I live at three oh five Twisted Oak Place in Spillings. I'm not gonna take a long time, I just want to give you an update on the investment that the city made in our Masonic Lodge. Now, the footing has been done, concrete is poured, and we laid blocks today. So scouts are gonna be living there with us, and you can't change the size of the garage door anymore, because of the blocks we laid.
Whatever it is, it's great.
We're, we're looking forward to continuing, moving forward, and we hope you all are looking forward to seeing the beautiful building.
Thank you, sir. And right across the street from you is going to be, help me, what is called Academy.
Fine Arts Academy.
Fine Arts Academy, Gwen Martin's been working on, so what a, what a great match, literally right across the street from each other. We're gonna do a little informative video on it, I think, next week or maybe this week, to get people on board or well aware of what's going on. So, yeah, we're excited about the lodge there, too, for sure. Uh, citizen, I mean, financial report. Are we ready, Mr. Tom?
We?
Are we ready for you, is what I mean. Mr. Tom Marsh.
First of all, I want to point out the, the new artwork that you have, the new picture. It's a blast from the past, a little bit of nostalgia there. You can see some of the things that are changed in the city by knowing what's out there now. One of the things that's very apparent is the top of the bell tower is not there, the clock tower. The other is, as somebody pointed out, this tree is gone.
Southern Red Oak.
Plus, there's no banners on our nice, nice wrought iron fence here. And the other is the Three Rivers Title Company is still there, so that hasn't been renovated over here yet. And then, for those that don't really see it, along this walkway here and several others, is the, the expanded Veterans Memorial Plaque. They're all, all down this way now. So, a lot, lot has changed in the city of Greenwood. Alright, so what hasn't changed is our negative growth pattern for the year. This is the cash basis city sales and use tax. How'd you like that?
That's great.
Okay, so we're gonna jump right into it. First, I want to point out up here at the top that July over the same period is up one point one one percent. So on a cash basis, we actually bettered our previous month. This is a cumulative down here, but the previous month, the previous July over this July is up one point one one percent. So we're going in the right direction. It is slowly but surely starting to recover. So when it looks at, when you take that into consideration for the twenty twenty-five's cumulative, we're going in the right direction as well. From the ten point three three percent through, from the March period cumulative, we're down to, we cut that in half to about five point six nine percent. So again, we're going in the right direction. However, when you look at whether we're gonna meet budget, highly unlikely. The probability of us meeting the budget of a three percent growth, which is up here in the corner, that is less than one percent. We are currently averaging two hundred and ninety thousand dollars a month for the first seven months. The probability for us, just the remaining months, meaning five months of twenty twenty-four, generated an average of three hundred and eighteen, but for us to make budget, we have to average three hundred and sixty-five thousand, and that has not been achieved in the previous year at all. That's, that would be a benchmark high for us. As far as the average distribution needed to obtain a zero growth, there's a chance, there's a probability of about twenty percent or less. The average we would need is three hundred and forty-three thousand. We did achieve that one time, and that was November of twenty-four, so it's probable. I mean, we could have that happen, but I still think we're gonna be slightly less than a zero percent growth for city sales and use tax. That's on a cash basis, what we actually take in and is distributed to us. So as far as the way the rest of the cities went, Barley is the only one that showed a, a large on their end, a large negative impact on the sales and or the distribution. They were down twenty-one point one one percent. I did look at their rebates, and they did have a significant amount of rebates, hit them during the July distribution period, which would have been made. As far as us and Fort Smith, we were running right about a one percent cash distribution, and we were positive as far as our sales, taxable sales is concerned, on a cash basis. In other words, as taxable sales are calculated based on how much money is brought, is distributed to us. We all know now that we have to add back the rebate and the audit numbers. So when you look at the rebates, we, just about what we normally have been over the last three years, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, the three years, we were at just under five thousand, so a little bit peak, but I'm looking for a larger rebate amount for August and or somewhere in this August to October period because of the June thirtieth fiscal year ends. So I'm anticipating that in August, we're gonna have a larger number here, more in the lines of twenty-four. So I would believe double digits coming, at least in our August, September-ish, October, a little bit of an anomaly there, we'll see how that pans out. As far as the recalculated, I told Steve when he was asking about this at the last city council meeting, Mr. Tedford asked about where we'd get this type of information, and I said I would restate the distributed, this is the cash basis distribution, July was three hundred and fifty-one, that calculates to that one point one one percent that you just saw, that's distributed to distributed, but when you add back the rebate and the audit adjustment, our growth for taxable sales, restated for the actual spend, regardless of rebate, was up one point oh one percent, or just at one percent. Still a growth, but now you see the impact of what the rebate does as far as taxable sales. So what that's basically saying is that it's given you a kind of an indication as to how the sentiment of the purchasing power of the citizens is going in, within the city, and their consumer confidence is concerned. So it's, it's growing. It's rebates that are hitting us as far as distribution is concerned. So if you look at the full distribution, which would be January through July, the city is adjusting for rebate and audit. The city is down one point eight four percent as far as taxable sales is concerned. So it isn't, it is negative, but it's trending positive. If you recall, last month it was two point two nine percent, so we're actually gaining ground. As to whether we'll be flat for the year, that's still left to be seen, because we still have five months to go, and more rebates. So the taxable sales trend adjusted for the rebate is sort of negative, a little bit negative, one point eight four percent right there, but that's the actual way that the, the amount of taxable sales has been calculated from November twenty-four to May twenty-five. That's when the sales occurred. This is actually January through July, if you look at distribution. The six-month taxable sales trend, twenty-four over twenty-five, recalculated, as I just showed you, you're looking at, this is positive for us, the fact that the twenty twenty-five numbers are above the twenty twenty-four numbers now for the second time in the year. Against twenty-four, twenty-four had a little bit more robust period between the December through April months, January or November to May, we're actually ahead. And as far as the county sales tax is concerned, again, that was positive as well, twenty-five, three percent, a half percent up for the same July over the same period, twenty-four. And as far as the cumulative is concerned, we kind of rebounded a little bit because of that to one point three nine percent down for the year. As far as the probability of us achieving a zero growth, which is what we budgeted, which would be hitting that two point six million dollar mark, we would have, our current average is two hundred and fourteen thousand, we would have to collect two hundred and twenty-one thousand. That did happen once in August. As far as that is concerned, that's still about a twenty percent probability that we would hit the zero growth in the county side, too. That funds operations, by the way. And as far as taxable sales, this is how it was distributed, that's our amount, seven point four five percent. So we had a two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar distribution, and the impact to the county was a one thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollar gain. So this is like an EKG of how the sales tax is going for the Sebastian County taxable sales. Kind of goes down, up, down, up, down, up, down, it's like, blip, and so following that logic, you would expect next month to be a little bit lower, if that's how it's gonna continue to go. And you see that it's actually twenty-eight million dollars down for the year, if you add up all these numbers. This is against twenty-four's numbers. It's twenty-eight million dollars short of last year's. As far as the combined is concerned, again, it's tracking in the positive direction, too. That's the city and the county added together, and what we budgeted versus, this is the distribution, so we're down three point nine one percent in total for both county and city sales tax, based on previous year. Now we get to the fun part, and this is the advertising and promotion, and there is an advertising and promotion meeting tomorrow, just so you know, and I wanted to show you the numbers, January through July. January through July, these are the number from twenty five against twenty four's decreases for each of the months. We were down six point oh six percent from the previous July. Notice July's numbers are actually lower than June's for the most part historically. So you see that six point oh six percent, so cumulatively, we haven't had a positive gain all year long. And that eleven point four nine percent does not take into consideration the budget, which is four percent increase. So that's a fifteen and a half percent decline in the amount of money that would have been collected against budget. An eleven or eleven and a half percent from what you anticipated getting and you cannot distribute because you don't have that money. That comes from prepared foods sales. There's your trend line for, it's pretty much flat for this year. And then I want to do something. I want to show you, there's July's totals. This is the drop that we've been seeing historically so far for each of the months for this year, and it's more tallied this way, AMP year-to-date. This is seven months for twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty, all the way till twenty twenty five. So for the seven-month period, this is where we are, and it is trending downward. So as it trends downward, it pulls that trend line for those eighteen to twenty five years down. So here's the five-year trend for AMP tax. Looks good. I mean, if you look at it just this, but that's a little bit of a misnomer. And I'm gonna tell you why. Because of what I just told you, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of the last eight months are below the trend line, which pulls that trend line down. So the more it's negative, the less likely the five-year trend is gonna remain positive. So I'm gonna break that down by year. Here's twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three's actual trend for the year, from January through December, flat. That came off of the COVID years too. This is the twenty twenty three negative. Now, this is the average AMP tax trend. This is the, uh, AMC is the average monthly collection, is sixteen eight in twenty two. It was seventeen eight five three in twenty three. It goes up, but so did inflation, as you know, we got a lot of coal in there too. So in the taxes based on the sale, it's other price. Twenty four, eighteen nine was the actual, but monthly collection, but you still notice it went trending downward. And in twenty twenty five, seventeen thousand is the average monthly collection. What I want to show you is the top range here for twenty twenty five is nineteen thousand. It's twenty four, the top number in twenty four was twenty four thousand. You pretty much hovered around twenty thousand right in here. But we're not, we didn't hit, haven't hit twenty thousand all year in the collection of AMP. So I'm gonna trend it a little differently. This is the twenty one to twenty three years. That was the year when it was trending more positively. But now in twenty four and twenty five, it's trending much more negative. I wanted to point that out. And we'll talk more about that tomorrow on the AMP commission meeting. The cash flow, seventeen million is what we started the year. We were year-to-date decrease in cash of five hundred and thirty four thousand. Still over sixteen million. This is supposed to be significantly lower based on budget. So the fact that we have decreased it three point one four percent based on what we, mostly due to this number down here in capital, uh, we haven't spent nearly what the budget dictated we would be spending and would probably have to go borrow for, as far as bonds are concerned, for the water sewer department. That's the most of that impact right here. Because in the capital expenditures, the city as a whole, this is city all-in, has spent fifteen point seven two percent in seven months of the, of the fifteen million five that we had in capital. So I'm gonna break that down a little bit different. I'm gonna extract water sewer because they are a large player in the capital expense improvement. So we had a fifteen point seven two, as I just showed you, all-in city. So if you move water and sewer, they have right now a six point four four percent spend on capital of the ten million eight. But if you extract that number from the rest of it, in other words, we subtract it from the year-to-date, this would be the capital of the city excluding water sewer, spent so far one point seven four five million on a budget of four point six million, or thirty seven point three three four percent. So now you see where the, uh, low fifteen percent number comes from. And that's pretty much all of our material. Any questions? I'm available on any day or night.
Alright, Tom. Thank you. A little sliver of hope there. I think we, I believe, detected silver lining, hopefully so. We'll keep looking for that to trend up. Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, next, we have agenda additions. We actually, we have one for sure. I'll have to look to Chief if there's another, or did we already, so number ten, uh, if council would allow, oh, thank you. If council would allow, number ten will be, uh, Street Resolution to Min Budget for Fox Run Change Order. And then number eleven will be Fire Resolution to Min Budget for Monitor. If council's good with that. Okay?
I'm not good with the change order, but we'll listen to it.
Okay. I am never good, but, yeah. Uh, okay, so we're moving on to, uh, old unfinished business. Not again asking for a vote tonight. And, uh, I like the fact that it's on the agenda just to keep everybody aware of it. I, I kind of debated whether to have Danielle do her little report, but I think I'm gonna ask her to, if she doesn't mind, about what she's been doing with code enforcement, uh, lately. You can do it from where you are, unless you want to come to the microphone. Just a brief synopsis, letters, that sort of thing. You like surprises?
No one else has to give it a whirl, do they? You're special.
She is special. What you been doing on code?
Will you push the button on there? I don't, I think it went to sleep.
No, it's not.
There's a button on.
On the mic.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
You hear me now?
Yes.
Hey, okay.
Your first comment wasn't recorded, that's good.
As I currently serve as the mayor's assistant.
Thank you.
And HR director, and also assisting with his new role as municipal league president. Um, I have been working code enforcement since the end of April, since we've not had anyone in that position. Um, in my downtime, which is not much, um, but since end of April, I have sent out over a hundred and thirty letters. And all I'm able to really try to monitor is overgrown grass and, um, trash to bring in yards. So I'm doing the best I can. I've taken numerous, numerous dozens and dozens of calls from residents complaining about yards. Um, I've been advised to have them contact you all, um, since, since it's not been approved to hire for that position. Um, it could be, be done better, but again, I don't have time as I am, I have a whole plate already.
Thank you.
And I'm not being, um, paid for that.
Thank you. So the reason I wanted her to give you a, a report is just to tell you what, what's on her plate, uh, for your consideration. Hopefully, if, if the budget, next budget, uh, time, uh, we can look at this. And I, I wouldn't call it limping along because she's doing a great job with the letters. But again, these are only letters regarding grass. We don't, we're not out there in the field because physically can't be, or she can't for sure. Although she does take a trip every so often in the city car and take a look, and, and Aaron's actually helping with that a little bit, I think, too. Okay, that's right. So just to be aware, uh, in my opinion, humble opinion for what it's worth, that, that is a very much needed position, uh, here at City Hall. So we could give, and code enforcement, in my opinion, could help immensely with this AMP situation of being able to collect these taxes in, in a better, quicker manner than we have, than we are now. I mean, that's, that's a, we've not done that in the past. We didn't do it with code before. But with a separate job all by itself, it would be very much a, a big part of that position, so.
I don't know, I know he's probably, doesn't want to do it for, for risk of getting stuck with it, but I'm assuming the chief of police has told his boys while you're patrolling the streets, just take a peek if you happen to see one, jot the addresses down.
I don't know that he's asked. Chief, you can address that. I, I have not asked him to do that, but I, I do the same thing when I'm out.
Like I said, we're not trying to stick him or, or the, the whole department with the job, just, uh, cause you guys can roam around the town more than anybody, I would hope. You know, patrolling, keeping the peace.
The, the issues of, in, in a letter is our first attempt of doing anything about any of this, whether it's a yard or a, uh, vehicle that's no longer running, that's on blocks, or hasn't moved in a year, six months, or something like that. But, uh, I just, in the future, hopefully the very near future, would be look at this a little seriously, more serious and, and get somebody in uniform, possibly armed, that can go out and take care of all this for us and, and, uh, handle all these things and, and put more on, on that person's plate. And, and again, I think AMP is a prime example of where we could benefit from it, so. That's all I had it on there for, is just to bring it, if council would, uh, want to table it and, or postpone it, however you want to do this.
Do you want to talk about it at budget time, or you want?
Yeah, I definitely want to talk about it at budget. I, I don't necessarily need it every month.
I'll make a motion that we bring it up at budget time and address it then.
Okay. So now, you got a first one?
That doesn't need a vote, does it? You just don't take any action on this, and y'all will agree to it, sorry, I just.
Okay, cool. Alright, moving on, new business, City Clerk Treasurer, Treasury. It's gonna be all that long.
Treasury clerk.
Uh, Resolution establishing a city IT committee.
Well, um, okay, so DCR, our IT gurus, and in, as a result of our, I think we got, our, our, got a supplemental finding or something about not being on our disaster recovery program good enough. It, it doesn't really have anyone that can take any action on it. So in order to appease that world in the auditor land, uh, we, we told them that we would establish an IT committee that will get on that as well as all the other IT matters of the city. We met Tom and, uh, the head lady of DCR and myself, we, we three met in Tom's office to kind of hammer out what this would look like. And so we've come up with this, or I came up with this resolution so you can understand what the role is of all of it. So it's yet another committee. It would be real similar to the certification committee in that I would be tasked with keeping minutes on it so that you'll know what was said, and so that means I'll record them, the meetings. Um, it's something important. Tom, you might have more input on the why of this and the importance of it?
Because of the findings that come out, two of which are in this supplemental for the audit that just was completed. For some reason, the finance director seems to be the IT expert. Well, I didn't go to geek school, so it's not one of the things that I'm pretty much first in about how to implement a disaster recovery plan and, but, uh, according to the audit, they say that, uh, the biggest responsibility in a, in a disaster or any kind of issue that happens as far as a breach is concerned, has the biggest impact to the finance department. That's why it seems to fall under the finance director. And I said, if this is gonna be the case, then I need to get involved in part of our response to them last year, which was January of this year, uh, in the twenty three audit, was that we would form an IT committee so that all the players would get involved. They liked that idea, and that was a promise that we made as far as the response to the twenty three audit. Now it's also gonna be the response for twenty four, but they also know that it's, uh, it's in the process of being implemented, so it was, it was fine. They liked the idea that multiple players were involved. DCR is actively involved, and they know exactly what now is being required as far as the audit is concerned and the IT standard practices for the state. So that's why we're doing a committee approach. Everybody has a role to play, in other words.
Well, um, beyond the disaster recovery attention that we would put, put to that through this committee, is also the whole rapidly advancing realm of AI. That's another thing legislature has, has demanded that we cities adopt an AI policy. Municipal League is in the works on that. This committee, if you see fit that we should have it, uh, will cover those things as well. And it includes each departmental director and their input on that. So there's a lot to IT in our city.
Network access as well, software implementation.
It deserves a team of people on it.
The person that wears the IT hat here in Greenwood is you. Who, who, who's our point?
DCR.
I mean, DCR's our subcontractor, but the person that's kind of communicates with DCR?
The police department has one.
Daniel Mahan, Daniel Mahan owns the software, uh, IT, uh, company. He services all down, the whole city of down. We're fortunate enough to have him in house, so he does all of our IT.
And then DC does all of ours.
DC.
And then also they do, they do our emails, the citywide emails.
DC does JLS emails?
DC.
Okay.
So can we have Daniel on this committee? I mean, would it be?
We, I recommended him to be on this committee. I think it's very important. There is a law coming down where cities do have to adopt AI policy, remember the AI policy that we presented last month or the month before? It basically says no AI. So that's in this day and age, you just have to, um, Google search something, your, your AI. I think this committee is gonna be a very thing, and we're gonna figure out what workforce.
And we're only gonna meet quarterly, if so. I mean, because it's not a, it's not a, you know, as much of a workhorse thing as, say, the certification committee, which we're meeting like twice a month for now, but.
So in membership, it says each departmental director and his or her appointee, so yours is gonna be Daniel?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, we've already kind of internally decided that that'd be the best. And of course, chief can come anytime he wants and come in on the meeting. We're gonna try to hold them virtual.
Right, I'm like Mr. Tom, though. I'm in this, the computers are not my forte. I was, I was, I was, I was, other than the fact that we have to secure our network and the DOJ standards, FBI standards, and ACIC, AIC standards, and GDM, the identity platform, that's gotta be secured. Which I'm sure that's what they're, I'm sure that's what they're wanting to do to finance, finance the city, so somebody can.
Attack them, yeah.
Well, will this committee also kind of be, uh, the go-to committee when, you know, a department's looking at a, 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 a different piece of software or a new software or whatever, see how it all integrates with, uh, with the city and stuff?
There's no issues as far as network is concerned and who gains access. Yeah.
That's one of the big pieces of it too, for security reasons. And since Daniel will be on there and DCR will be in our meeting, somebody from DCR will always be in our meeting. Uh, that'll be covered because you really don't do anything here without DCR knowing about it.
One other thing, it'd be, it'd be nice to have a primary and alternate. I don't perceive Daniel anywhere, but if somebody came in and offered him a ton of money, I could lose my IT person fairly quick. So if we have a primary and alternate, we have alternate.
Well, it still reverts back to you, you're, you're director, so it reverts back to you, and you can designate whoever you want.
And, and they do communicate with him, so they, they, they talk.
So it says in here, each departmental director and his or her appointee, uh, the commissions, or you're including them underneath, the water sewer commission, you're including them under departmental director?
Oh, yeah. It's all the directors, whether or not they have a commission.
Okay.
I mean, there's no, uh, director for the AMP commission, so no, but, but most of the other commissions are all, have directors.
Where's this other outfit we talked about that Hunter was promoting? Yeah, where they fitted all this?
That's a software.
I'm officially off this committee, as you just, stupidity shines. Well, at, at any time, and every, every, everybody in this room, well, staff knows that, you talked about it not being your forte. I don't even know how to spell forte or IT as far as that goes. So I would like to attend just to be that, the, the attendee, but I can, if it comes down to me appointing somebody that knows something, anything, which would be anything more than I know, that would, I don't have a problem with that at all.
That's why it says and or.
Yeah, and or.
Both, you know, both of you can.
Yeah.
Right.
No, yeah.
And, uh, mainly, the attention that will be put to our disaster recovery is paramount because that continuity plan is neglected. And none of, we have a very small staff here. I mean, we're juggling, we're wearing so many hats, all of us. So, uh, things get on back burner. And that's a really important thing to not land on a back burner for very long because things just rapidly change, you know? Every two years, everything's outdated. I mean, that plan is really outdated when two years, three years go by. So, we got, we gotta get on it and...
So, what, what are we paying DCR to do? Are they not in charge of the plan?
It's built into their certain salaries that they...
Their blocks of time?
It's not an additional fee. It's just, if they come in and spend an hour, it's off of that bundle that we have.
I'm just saying a backup disaster recovery plan's not in their job, job description?
Well, no, they have to. We're, we're gonna work with them to modify that and update it based on all the stuff that they've done. For instance, uh, back in the old day, we had one backup to the servers.
Yeah.
And then you have two now. It was redundant over to station two. Well, now we have three because now we're backed up to the cloud. All those things have changed, but we haven't modified our actual paper document to show what is, what they have done. So, what we're gonna do is put our heads together and get it so that it can be sent up to Arkansas legislative audit so that they can look at it and do it. And then they wanna know, okay, what's your plans for testing it? Because we have to do a test, similar to like the dam break and you guys do for fire.
Because our recovery CD, or whatever they are now, are in farmer's bank over there on seventy-one south, far away in case a tornado happens or something like that. Um, and it's just, there's a lot of things about it that need to happen that are just being neglected. And DCR has been integral in what we've got, but...
I just assume...
They can't keep it going without us, really.
I'd assume we were paying them to keep that thing updated.
They do.
It's just that we have to get it formulated in such a way that, that lingo and that verbiage that needs to be documented and how to document it, they're gonna have to help us with that.
And plus, we know what legislative audit wants more than they know what they want.
Just may I have any question? If something? Yes.
I've done one before, and it was in its early stages. So, more than anything, it's just a paper plan saying, if this city hall was leveled, you're gonna go to this location, you're gonna load all this stuff. You know, you just have to literally say physically what you're gonna do. And DCR will have all that technology. But you have to say in a plan, I'm gonna drive to this location, I'm gonna have these many computer... It's, it's almost ridiculous in a way that you have to physically write that all down and say, these are the people it will call. I mean, it's just a paper, you know, DCR could recreate everything we have somewhere like that, but you have to put it in the document.
We have to show Arkansas that as a city, we will resume operations, and this is how we're gonna do it.
It's all that information.
Very, like, cook the, you know, the sun dry and this would be, that's what we do. You have to just write down everything you're gonna do and it's gonna be...
And we already have that, it's just outdated. Things change.
Well, in that case, I'll make a motion, we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion second to adopt.
Super excited about that.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
No, I was like, keep on here.
You sure?
Yeah. I'm waiting for you.
All right, thank, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, so, number three is a resolution to amend budget for roof replacement city hall. I'm gonna let Hunter come up and address this. We, the office that I gave up a couple of years, few years ago, where Tom's office is now, is kind of our first, oh, we got a leak issue in there. And so, Hunter, as our building inspector should, had, had some guys come out and take a look and see, tell them what, what we found.
Roof is, to be quite frank, it's original to the building. There's a couple of patches up there. They've got a lot of antennas, uh, put on the roof over the years, old mounting brackets holding the roof. We've got, I think I'm talking ahead, six active leaks throughout the facility right now. We've been trying to manage those since I've been here. Uh, we've had one show up in a finance director's office, it's pretty substantial. So, I've decided to contact a couple of roofing companies and have them provide us with some quotes just to ballpark what it would be to have a roof replacement done. I think that was a wise decision, just based on the quotes that I got to fix the roof with the same materials, was well over double the price as it was to replace it with the new modern materials, TPO. What we have now is a modified membrane roll roofing. It's, um, it's got about a twenty-year lifespan. I think the building's twenty-five years old. So, we've got our life expectancy out of the roof. I've given all the quotes to Tom, so I don't have the wrong opinion for that. But I think the, uh, the lowest price there was just under fifty thousand. And they went from there and doubled up to, I think, one hundred and sixteen thousand to replace it with the materials that we currently have. So...
I guess I don't understand here when you says, uh, to, you know, fix the, the leaks and existing cat flashings after installing a new TPO. So, a new TPO hasn't been installed yet?
Correct.
Okay.
TPO membrane is what the fire department has on their flat roof. According to today's standards, our roof does actually not have enough pitch for the roll roofing that it has on there now. It was probably sufficient back in the day. It's very flat, and that's where TPO specializes. So, they won't have to take the existing roofing off. They will just lay down a foam membrane and then TPO over the top of that.
This one wasn't not something that was budgeted for, correct?
This is not really, you know, up until this point, uh, a lot of the big rainstorms that we've had in the last couple of months have allowed a lot of the bigger, bigger leaks around the facility. Uh, it's been one or two here or there that have been fairly minor, but they've aged pretty quickly. The newest one I, I think showed up a month ago over by the water office. And every time it rains now, it's spot and grows harder and harder.
I guess the only part I have there to say, it should be like after consideration of a, a new TPO because we're, you're looking at that, but you decide, no, we're gonna go to this other method. You get a whole new kind of roof structure there, right? Because to me, it looks like we already got a new TPO, and then all of a sudden, now we're finding all these leaks. And it seems like, you know, I just kinda have fault with that right there, you know?
I'm not familiar with your reading of both.
The wording comes right from the Russell exteriors work order, what, what they're bidding for. What they call that comes right off of that first paragraph.
So, that's what we're implementing is a new TPO system or not?
We just have a resolution.
Resolution.
Uh, well, the wording in the resolution comes right from the actual quote from the company as far as what they're, what they're doing.
Yeah, what, what AC's saying is, is that the resolution sounds like we've already installed the TPO membrane, and now we've got leaks around the cat flashings.
Uh, that wording needs to be changed around.
Yeah.
That's what it kinda reads like.
It, it does. It reads like fixing issues after we've had a new roof installed. We have, we have not had any new roofing installed. Uh, of the three companies that it would require, they all take four samples of our roof. They reseal those areas down. Uh, that is the only work that's been done on our roof up to this time.
Okay, so the wording on here, just so you understand what they're doing. It says, remove all existing metal cat flashings around the perimeter of the roof. Install and properly slow BISO installation board to ensure positive drainage. Install a new TPO membrane roofing system, fully adhere or mechanically fast and fast specified. Install new pipe boots and all required flashing details to ensure a watertight seal around all penetrations and transitions. Reinstall all perimeter metal cap flashings after membrane installation is complete, which is why it says after. Uh, all work will be performed in accordance with manufacturer specifications, local building codes to ensure a long-lasting durable roofing system. So, that's why the wording says what it says. But if it's confusing, we'll modify that to be exactly what they have in this.
We're just replacing the roof, right?
Yeah, the cat flashing goes on last, so that everything...
And the roof, it costs forty-nine thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. Not in our budget. That's a complete roof.
Yes, sir. All, with all exception of the metal roofing, we've got standing seam metal roofing over all of the steep pitch portions of the facility. This is just the flat roof on the tier four wings of the, the roof.
And this will have a twenty-five year, you say, or twenty-year?
Twenty-year, I think, is TPO. That's about the standard nowadays. They used to throw out twenty-five, thirty years with roll roofing and tank go asphalt shingles. That's not really the case anymore. It's all about twenty.
And we have damaged ceiling tiles all over the building, or we're just gonna get some and they're standard? No big deal?
Yeah, that's...
We can pull some matching tile out of storage garlands and...
So, how this affects our general fund?
Forty-nine thousand dollars. Now, you do have, you have, you have some maces in the hole. At the finance meeting that I did the other day, I told you about some of the savings there. There's the savings that not gonna happen from the FEMA that you have. You have the thirty-eight thousand, thirty-four thousand rather, from the sale of the right-of-way. You have, I think there was one other large amount that was budgeted, I can mention. But, um, right now, he's in a, he's in a fairly decent position to absorb that as far as issues budgeted is concerned.
And this is an unbelievably low price, if I'm reading this correctly. So, hopefully, we can get it done for that, not have a bunch of change orders later on.
I think if we had no change orders, that is...
My intention would be not to approve any of them if they come in because either bid the job right or not at all, you know what I'm saying? That's, I get tired of these guys coming in here and... I heard somebody say a hundred and sixteen grand on a bid. I mean, that's a lot cheaper, which is, that's great, I love...
I had that company give two bids, so the hundred and sixteen was skewed a little bit because it's just replacing the roof with what we have now, which is a slightly more expensive product. I think the quote for item for item was roughly ninety-six thousand compared to this forty-nine.
Gotcha.
And this is a quality deal, qual- quality contractor?
Yes, sir.
How many years should this last?
They, they're all twenty years. So, all of these quotes were for the same materials, uh, TPO as far as the material standard for today for flat roofs.
I make a motion, we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Uh, no.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Passes by majority.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Mr. Michael. Next is number four, resolution to amend budget for Mount Harmony Turn Lane project cost. So, this does not give you the total cost from said project. This is a five thousand dollar, uh, expense for the initial fees that were not budgeted, obviously, and sales taxes, we didn't know about it. I'd, I'd ask RDOT to look at this project, uh, but this gets the ball rolling, I guess is a good way to put it. Tom, do you have the numbers?
It doesn't have it in this document anywhere.
It's RDOT asking for that for their administrative.
Right.
Get going on it.
Well, I'm talking about our, our, our estimate, estimate cost. Do you have a, Jeff? We talked about it already, but...
Yeah, we talked about it.
And you guys approved this back when?
Two eighty.
Somewhere in, huh? Two eighty?
It was under three.
Yeah, it was under three, I think it was two eighty.
Okay. But this is, again, the fact, well, you can read it, it's...
So, this starts the design project.
Correct.
And any five thousand dollars start the design.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
And does, does it, when they, what do we receive for that? Do we receive complete engineering?
Well, they're gonna do it, so they're not, they're not gonna engineer and hand it over to us. I can, I can promise you, they don't, they don't do that, but...
If for some reason you don't do the project after they come back and say, this is what it is, then you're out that five thousand.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
And we, and just... Learn to provide ten percent. I'll make a motion, we adopt the resolution.
Second.
The motion is second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yep.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
You know.
Thank you. I think this is gonna be a great tradition.
They, they won't delete the sidewalk, will they, in all this? That sidewalk gets used a lot.
No, this is, this is on Tim.
Turn lane to go up.
Turn lane to go to Mount Harmony.
Okay, it's not Tim's road coming down to Mount Harmony. I was thinking it was a turn lane to Mount Harmony.
There's a self-proclaimed turn lane there already from people that go, but this is actually making a turn lane.
Not the one we discussed four or five years ago, in the middle.
Right, right, right.
Right.
You want them? Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, number five is Water Wastewater Commission Resolution to Update Salary Matrix to Add Water, Wastewater Form and Position. Charlotte just informed me, you're here, so...
At page two, at very bottom, it's shaded, but I don't think it came through very good on your copy, so...
Yeah.
Page two, very bottom, that is the only change they're adding. And the Water Wastewater Commission approved this unanimously. We are forwarding on to you for formal adoption in our salary matrix. If you have any questions, Tanya's here and Teresa's here.
We're not hiring anybody, we're just adding another tier right now in the structure.
I would ask that, um, what we've done is we've eliminated two positions in your, you were at the meeting Monday night. Um, and absorbing, adding to that now a, uh, four and three position. That four and three position is going to take over coordinating the two segments of the wastewater treatment and distribution. That person will also become a green to take on the position of director, eventually orient the dr- the director in absence, also to manage some of the construction. So, we're gonna take some of that, we, we've got to do our budget. We're not increasing our budget at all, we'll be using the salary that we eliminated to, to make that position. It could be, we might hire somebody or they come up with, you know?
What were the two that you eliminated?
One was the administrative assistant, and the other is a mechanic. Correct.
It was what?
Mechanic.
Mechanic, yeah.
So, you didn't delete anything from this matrix?
Correct.
Kinda make that clear.
This also kind of tracks with the way the water, the water department set up as well. The main, main issue is if this person came there and started learning, um, and hopefully training to take over a director's position. That's, that's where we seem to have fallen. And that, that will have to, probably be hired to foundation of most.
That's only changed the matrix.
So, you're saying that the administrative assistant and the mechanic spot, y'all have, uh, they're still in the matrix, but y'all have not, you know?
We don't have anybody.
Anybody in those positions? Okay.
And then obviously for catch your bite, we'll, we'll go around and...
What are you doing, are you, sorry, excuse me, are you sharing mechanic now with? I know it has, it did that in the past, is that happening now? Or what are you, what are you doing about a mechanic?
I mean, it used to be shared with the water, but there's no one in that position.
Right.
We can't mechanic it ourselves, we can't write it out, we can't, I don't even know what the person did.
We, we helped in the past as well.
I thought you did, and I know Randy just...
Since Randy retired.
Randy retired, and that, that was a shared.
Right, and so we've been helping out and working here.
Okay.
Tim has attempted, but we haven't had him qualified yet.
So, Randy Gregory was actually doing all the departments.
Not Gregory, uh.
Godfrey.
Godfrey, Godfrey. He was doing all of it.
He was watering the sewer.
Water, yeah.
We have our own unit here.
Yeah.
A long time ago, I think Randy did everybody.
Yeah, because he was actually in the street and, yeah.
He's wearing multiple hats, and then they got split.
Yeah.
Now, now y'all hadn't replaced.
We wore him out. He had to retire.
I think one of the issues is that for that type of position, it really exceeds our, what we feel we can afford in salary position. It doesn't mean something's come down from the plan, but for the remaining of this year, this is what we'd like to do.
Yep. And Randy was pretty talented.
I make a motion, we pass this resolution or adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Have a motion, second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor?
Yes, sir, yes.
Uh, before, I was wanting to ask Ms. Teresa something. I guess I should have done it back up in committee reports, but I forgot, didn't think about it with, for the wastewater committee. And I don't know if she's gonna leave early, so I was wondering if I could get ahold of her.
Sure.
So we're talking about the Masonic Lodge and the Fine Arts Academy. There's been talk of a fire hydrant needs to go in that area. And I was just curious, I know that the Water Waste Water Commission, I think every year has two, they float around, that they just. They can put in, install wherever they want. Maybe I was wondering if that might be an option. Well, who do I need to butter up for that? Okay, I've, I have talked to him a little bit about it, but I haven't reminded him. I just was kinda curious. We're getting kinda close to that, I guess.
Well, we would wanna definitely be in compliance with the state and depending on what it's, I don't think it would require it for the lodge, but for the Fine Arts, then it probably gonna have to have one there.
Well, I, that initially was what we were told, is they were needing one for the lodge, and it was, it would save us, yeah. It just costs us eight or nine or ten Gs. But, okay, I'm, I was thinking now that we've got another reason, not just those old decrepit farts at the Masonic Lodge, and maybe we could get one put in there and kill two birds with one stone. I'm in the lodge, by the way, if you don't.
No.
Right. Well, I didn't want them to think I was making fun of the old men.
You're one of those guys.
Right. Anyway, I appreciate it.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I need, I needed to back up, just to ask a question on four.
Okay.
So on this Mount Harmony intersection improvement?
Yes, sir.
So there's gonna be, obviously, this turning rain, maybe it's a hundred foot long. Is that, do I have that right in my mind?
Yes.
Okay, so who's the point man on this design? When the design comes back, who is it?
It's going to Jeff.
Jeff? You're the point man. Okay.
I, I put him as the point man because it's a street.
That's great. Sounds reasonable.
Yes.
So what I wanna make sure of is that they know we have a pedestrian, pedestrian circulation plan that's existed for twenty-five years, and that even though it's only maybe a hundred feet of sidewalk, it needs to be there. It needs to be planned for, and we don't wind up with some street light, the pole coming right down where the sidewalk should be, that it's all been taken into effect, and we're not trying to backwards engineer something because they left something out, so. You're the point man, so will we see the design when they present it, or is it just, once we turn it over, they're doing, do what they do?
No, we'll, I'm sorry, we, we will definitely see it.
Yeah, and they get, I mean, they allow us to give input and things like that. It's not a, it's not a just in, take it over, you know? But it's gonna be their contractor doing the work.
Well, even though that it's just a hundred feet long, I wanna see that a hundred foot sidewalk, or whatever it was, the trail, or what it, you know, the ten foot wide for a trail. Whatever planning says look goo- looks right, so.
Well, I've thought about what you said. I think, I can remember that at some budget meeting or, or the last meeting, about doing sections.
Like two hundred and fifty feet a year?
And that might be a good project.
Well, then that, when they get through, that two hundred and fifty feet may take you to the new highway improvement.
Exactly.
And that, and then you got another circulate, you know, you got kids that can walk to town from Mount Harmony, or ride their bike, or whatever.
The thing that'll affect that somewhat is, I guess that, that's gonna turn a little bit because the, they're gonna demolish the psychic bridge. And so it shifts over this way, so we'll kinda have to be aligned with that as well.
Well, I guess my point also is like when we built the light down at the intersection, at the end, we realized there's a, a big gigantic box, a control box, in front of the Welcome to Greenwood sign. And fifty thousand dollars later, we gotta move ten feet, and now it looks good. But in the end, in a planning portion, we wanna catch things like that before we do things like that, and somebody at the end says, why did you do that? Well, it'll cost us fifty thousand dollars to fix it. We don't wanna do that.
But it didn't. But it didn't.
But, or whatever.
RDOT did that. I, I, I caught RDOT, and I said, listen, this is not gonna fly.
Yeah.
And it took me about four people before we met back out there, and they moved. We, we.
It was originally their life.
Yeah, we didn't, yeah.
Let's just try to catch these things on the beginning, and if you can involve planning so that planning can say, hey, the pedestrian circulation says that won't be a five foot sidewalk, it'll be ten foot. Cause it's actually a, a trail, a multipurpose trail through there. And then we go into, what we ask you to do is maybe the two hundred and fifty feet, every year doing two, two hundred and fifty feet until we get there, so. All right, you're the point man. Thank you, and I'd like to see.
You're welcome.
We, yeah, we would like to see some details at a point, but.
So does I get them all, Sheriff?
Well, the way I understood it, we just approved five grand, and we don't have to pay another dime if we don't like what we see.
Well, I hope we like what we see.
Yeah.
Because then they can proceed on, and we're only on ten percent.
Yeah, sure.
So.
All right.
I just want a sidewalk.
I get you. I get you.
Bottom line sidewalk.
Yeah, before I go on, I failed to do it while I go. I wanna break, we've got several guests, and we welcome all of, well, we don't really have that many guests. We've got two guests from Waldron with us tonight, and these guys are city councilmen down there. I'm not, I, I guess they're here to watch and see how not to do a council meeting, the only thing I can figure. So Mr. Jeff Gilbert and David Carter. So welcome, gentlemen, uh, to our show.
Man, y'all are gluttons for punishment. As long as you're not Owens's or riding hours.
Oh, okay, wow.
They're not taking Travis back, are they?
I don't know. I don't know. Did they escort you down here? No? Okay. Thursday night, and I saw the agenda. It looks like fun, by the way. So, okay, thank you, gentlemen.
I'll be there.
For being here. All right, moving on, uh, is number six, City Attorney Repealing and Replacing Orders twenty-two dash fifteen, Curative for AMP Tax First Reading.
Uh, I would like to ask that you guys table this next month. Um, we've got some more work we need to do here, specifically on section one. Uh, we do not want to repeal twenty-two fifteen or ten thirty-nine, so we are gonna bring this back next month if you guys would, uh, table it.
Motion to table.
Second. Motion is second to table.
Who te- who seconded that?
I did.
Brown.
Brown.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
And Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Mr. Plummer, can't find my other paper here. Uh, number seven is Resolution to Mend Budget for Former Senior Citizen Repairs. Uh, Stan, Stan Hope and I, uh, took a walkthrough. Uh, we've done several walkthroughs, and now that the senior, now that the center has officially moved over into our new facility, they're in there a couple of months now, loving it, everything's fine, great. Uh, they still need some things, but so our obligation is to leave that facility, the built, and I'm talking about the old center, the bank building, uh, as good as we can, like we found it some twenty-something years ago. Uh, and over those years, we, we, uh, the city has done very, very little main, to maintain that facility. Uh, we did roof it, uh, once or twice, I think, over those years. We've done a few things on the outside. I have already, uh, we've already done the work needed on the outside of the building. We've already done that. We did, we did painting, uh, we did a little bit of, quite a bit of caulking, repair windows, things like that, and the, the most recent thing is we restriped the parking lot, uh, for them. So now we're in the ins, we're on the inside. They, when I say we've moved out, or this, this, the, the center has moved out, there's still some things left in there. There's some equipment that belongs to them. There's a, there's a little bit that belongs to us that we had moved over there uh, from the new building, just to get them, keep them going until we got in the new building. But most of all of this, or all of this, is painting, caulking, uh, light, some light fixtures that were broken. Uh, uh, certainly light bulbs. Uh, there's not hardly a bulb in there that looks like a light bulb anymore. They're brown. So this is, this is what this represents, this fifteen eight, and I think he's got it up to sixteen, uh, to not exceed sixteen, so. Uh, did a walkthrough with Stan Hope, and Stan Hope, I will tell you, don't mind telling you, I wanna tell you that he was very, if you know Stan Hope, he's actually pretty conservative with, with his money, for sure, and he told me he wants to be conservative with our money. So this is not painting every single wall in that building, uh, cause it would probably be twice that much or more. So he would look at a wall, and if it wasn't too bad, he would say, don't worry about that. Let's paint this one over here where it's all marred up by whatever usage. Uh, but it, but it represents that, and so he's, he's very satisfied with, he doesn't even know what this costed. I don't know that I even told him yet. But he walked through, and he told, uh, uh, Jackie, what's his last name? Hooton, went, is, is the gentleman that I took through, who did all the workings, a lot of work along with Butch Bean back in the day here in City Hall. And, uh, he told Jackie, he said, I'm telling you what I kinda like to see done, but the mayor has to approve any of it before you do it, so. We agreed upon the work to be done. It'll leave it in good shape, nice shape, not brand new by any means, but at least put it in shape where he can then, he is in the bank, Stan Hope can offer it up as a rental, cause that's, that's their goal, is to rent this facility out to offices or. I'm trying to talk him into a steakhouse, but they'd spend a whole lot of money to, to, to see that happen, so. Uh, that's what this is. I had suggested to Tom, as soon as we received the thirty-six? Thirty-four thousand dollars on our payment from RDOT for our right of way out at the new facility, that I thought it would be appropriate to utilize that money for this, anything to do with, with this and or anything we need to do in the future for the center. Uh, with that thirty-four thousand dollars, Tom agreed with me, and we got a resolution that, that, uh, represents that.
The Treasury clerk also agreed.
And the Treasury clerk agreed, yes, yes.
I was just wondering, Mayor, I mean, it seems like, you know, since we're gonna do all these remedial repairs, we're gonna kinda put it in, kinda uh, good structure or whatever, you know, to hand it back to them and stuff, but I'm thinking, it seemed like we're always looking for storage places. I mean, either it's for files or, or whatever, you know, and it seemed like we're running out of, I mean, would it not be beneficial to try to continue the relationship at a dollar a year?
That's not gonna happen.
For storage?
I, I mean, I'm, I, I'm not gonna say, I take that back. I'm not saying it won't hit, the bank and Stan Hope in particular are looking forward to rent that bill, that lease that facility for quote unquote, real money. Uh, would they do that? I didn't ask. Uh, we could probably fill it, but we would be filling, it would be like my garage. That's a big building. We would be filling it full of stuff that we probably will never touch, like, like my garage. I've got stuff in there that I don't even need. I don't even know whose it is, so.
Didn't the roof leak a lot too, or not?
The roof has leaked. It, it is currently not leaking.
We spent money on it.
Because we would be spending money some more, but currently it is in, it's in okay shape, uh, so.
At what point does our obligation to remodel their building for them end?
That's it. That's it. We, so.
Is there pictures of the parking lot before we got in there? Was it painted freshly when we took it over?
Well, I couldn't swear to that, but I think.
It was not.
But we've had it for twenty-five years for a dollar a year. We owe them something.
I would have thought maybe, they agreed to lease it. I mean, in that lease agreement, did it mention putting it back, fill in the gas tank full when you bring it back to the rental car shop? You know what I'm saying?
You, you do have to do that.
Right.
Right.
But was it in our lease agreement with the bank to repaint everything and restrap the parking lot?
It does not, it does not get specific at all, but I think fifteen thousand dollars is, sixteen thousand dollars is well, pretty decent for twenty-five years.
I thought it was in the agreement that we were supposed to kind of.
Oh, it was too.
It was to keep it up. It does, no, what I meant was, it doesn't say repaint the striping. It doesn't say this. It says keep it up. Yeah, absolutely.
I make a motion, we adopt the resolution utilizing the money that refunded by the RDOT.
Second.
Have a motion, second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Thank you very much. This will begin tomorrow with your approval tonight, so we'll get moving on it. Uh, moving on to, uh, number eight is Police Resolution to Update Uniform Assuance Policy for Sworn Personnel. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor, this, uh, resolution is requested by the auditor. Last year, I changed the policy with PD and I actually, I changed it to the issue. Last year, we got, uh, we paid in, in-house for personal, personal uniforms. At the request of the council, this year, we give it in a favorable way. So last year, we was, I'm on a suit and tie. The auditors, the auditors thought that that needed to be approved by the council. Uh, it was a misunderstanding by me. I thought that we're gonna pass the budget per year with that allowance going to each officer, but that was your blessing, and my apologies for not being able to.
Every other department seemed to think that. I don't know why you'd be any different.
If there's any questions or likes, one of the, uh, just something about your question, I'd see. Can I explain that right, Mr. Charlotte?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
I make a motion, we adopt this resolution.
Second.
The motion is second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, chief. Number nine is Parks Resolution to Mend Budget for Air, says compressor, but I think it's conditioner, uh, unit replacement at the, Ed Wilkinson Pavilion.
Uh, last year, we spent some maintenance money on the air conditioning on the north side of the building. This year, we've actually spent a little bit more. Uh, I think the total for last year and this year was close to twenty-four hundred dollars. Uh, the blower has, is completely gone on that north unit. They asked for six thousand dollars to repair it. So better use of the money to allocate the replaces in the budget for replacement of the south unit next year.
Okay.
It's, this is fine with the Parks Commission?
Yeah, this passed most of the Parks.
There's not any additional money needed. Is the, is it coming from budgeted money for the parks?
It is coming from our budget, but we did not budget this expense.
But you have enough to cover it in your own money?
Absolutely.
Right, plus this is a revenue-producing entity for them, so you don't wanna do anything that would delay somebody from renting it.
The secondary concern is that we're kinda limping along with one unit.
And it's probably the best revenue producer in the city. Most everything else, we operate as a service. I, I make a motion, we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Thank you, gentlemen. Number ten, uh, we'll get Mr. Jeff up here, so. This is a change order for Summit Ridge, or slop, slash Fox Run.
I think I mentioned last meeting, probably the earlier version of the questions, but, um, I can come back to you this meeting with, uh, some more range, uh, plans for, uh, Fox Run. We've had several instances of the water running over across Main Street into Tommy Titcher's yard and maybe the seal. And so the contractors identified several compliances, but we should, uh, add additional inlet boxes on the north side. And so before we want to, uh, asphalt, we wanna get those in. Uh, there's also a berm that we're gonna build up towards the, um, splash pad to hold some of that water up there using riprock. And so the contractor will install that, and then downward, the water will come across. And so, the contractor will install that, and then downward, the water will come across, we'll have to add the pipe, the pipe to the ditch. And then, I think I told you about the trench drain that we're gonna install there, uh, just before you get to Main Street, uh, to take care of that water, we're afraid that, once that's paved, that water will just come straight down that hill and right down Main Street. So, uh, to avoid that, we're gonna put up that trench drain, it's kind of like a, the best thing to compare it to is cattle guard, but it's not. It's a mesh that you can walk over, or you can drive your bike over, not get your fingers and toes caught in it or anything, but it will take, take the brunt of that water coming off the, uh, the road itself. We did learn that the, uh, inlet boxes that we do have, because of some of this, have already been silted in. And so, that's not part of the, that's just part of maintenance. But we, they've identified those because of that, they think that we need these other inlet boxes to, to deflect some of that water, and be going on the north side of, uh, the road.
You like using Olson Engineering?
Well...
They seem to kind of engineer along as they go and find problems.
This is, uh, this is the project that they, uh, were originally on. I, I probably won't, uh, we have any more time?
We've had, what, three meetings with Olson during this process, if not more, several on the phone, but two or three in person in my conference room, and yeah, we're, we're just trying to get this thing done.
The, uh, original engineer on the project was a Greenwood person, and he's no longer with them, and so, we didn't get the service that we...
Thought you were gonna get.
And so, uh, yeah, I think some of these are probably shortcomings, uh, given the rock. You know, we did change that design of going over instead of under, because it was much more rock to finish. And so, that has affected the runoff. Every time you break those rocks, you've got more water coming, groundwater coming out. We've seen a little bit of water coming off the pad itself, of course, uh, majority of it's supposed to be, uh, recycled, but you got people that there's splashes, and water's just gonna come out, so we, we're trying to take care of that as well, and not cause any more problems in the neighborhood.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, I guess, the part of, uh, the scope of the engineering project, I mean, include a, a drainage study, that they would be prepared for this?
The inlet boxes that we got satisfied what they had, but when we changed the design, had to change the design, I think it left some gaps that they didn't fill at that time.
And just, just for additional, not to... It's not just Mr. Tensher's house, the, the gentleman that lives next door, he, he sent me a private, or a message to the mayor's page, I guess, or mayor's website. And I went up and visited with him, it's, it's the, the White, Mr., remember the?
Me, who was Miss White's house.
Yeah, Miss White's house there, he's, he's moving in, and he's, and he took me around, he was very nice, very cordial, very understanding, but he took me around to the back of it. If you look at the front of his yard, you really don't see a whole lot of damage, because it's all going over to Thomas. But what's not going to Thomas is coming in his backyard, and he had a, a creek, or a ditch, that, that the water had, uh, created back there, so.
So, in the thirty, the change orders for thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars?
Yes.
And in that, what of it's actually labor and material, and how much of that is actually reengineering?
Uh, we didn't really have to pay much for reengineering, uh...
We shouldn't.
This is a kind of a, a gap, I think, the page, not the page, the, uh, one page, page...
They have, they have the, this...
Okay, the, the one that's a, a grid shows...
The back.
That has color copy, they've got color.
They got color, okay.
Are you going back this one?
This one.
Or the, okay, the, the middle, the page before the color one, that one, table-looking thing, yeah.
Items that will be paid for, uh, mostly, mostly materials on this.
Is this something where the contractors happen to come back, or is he, is he gone, and we're gonna...
Yeah, I mean, we were to the point where, um, the, uh, we were in for asphalt, uh, until we saw some of these shortcomings. In the, in the south side, you can see there's water running right now, and we got, that rain has got been delayed completely significantly, and there's still water running.
So, what's the ti, we prove the, prove this, what time will it be completed?
I, I would think it'll be thirty days.
Okay, so he's adding ninety calendar days to the contract work?
Yeah, but I guess it's not gonna take that long. They're, they are still in town, working on another project for us, so they're not gonna have to mobilize very much to...
Olson, Olson or Steve Bean?
Steve Bean.
Okay.
They're working on that Spruce Street drainage up there.
Okay, so they're right across the street?
They're right across the street, so we're not paying any mobilization or anything like that on this.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Second.
There's a motion, a second to approve. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd like to get this...
Yes, sir.
I don't know what this, how old this little colored platte dill is here we're looking at, but this future senior sitter, I'd like to get that removed.
I saw that today.
Yeah, that is actually on the, the background of the pad files.
Yeah.
Uh, and they took the different, the lane, this project, plus the pad files that we already have.
Gotcha.
And so, that's, that's a remit of that.
Yeah, that, that took me back today, because I looked up there, and I thought, well, that's, that is, that was my desire, or when I approached him, I said, hey, how about we put it up here? How cool would that be? And unanimously, Frank's here, not, he didn't necessarily, but they went, uh, no.
Right.
We don't want it up there, plus we didn't have five million dollars at the time to build it.
That, that data, that they're gonna lay it over is not theirs, it's law.
Yeah.
Might be a change, yeah, what you would, you would...
Gotcha, so we have a motion, a second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Jeff. Number eleven is a fire resolution, a resolution to amend budget for monitor, chief.
Uh, President, Mayor, Council, Mr. Eric, uh, our monitor, it's on, uh, on the tower. Years ago, was damaged, we had it repaired, and we've had it repaired several times since, and now it's finally doing now. Past couple times, we tried to use it, we had to shut down the power on the towers, but we turned it back on, get it back activated. Uh, don't need to do that, it's a fire. And so, uh, I gotta call on, uh, changing the, the, uh, the monitor out, went and talked with, uh, with Tom about it, figure out where we get money, and, uh, basically, city sales and use tax, and just amend the budget, uh, there with, uh, maybe some spare fire equipment, that amount, but only about five thousand dollars, and then we, uh, part of the property, thirty thousand dollars on this. I've got your quote there, uh, this could be a PFP, a long city monitor, it's the standard monitor, of course, that's, we put on towers now. And this is going through a certain dealer over in Park, our trucks, and they get a huge discount to the T out. I was expecting to be a lot more, got a quote, uh, five years, it was fifteen grand for one, so I did that part, we did fix it, we did fix it. And so, we came back with, uh, twelve nine twelve, I, I called you, said, are you sure you have the right? And called up, this is, we get a major discount because of our truck sales.
So, this is not, this is, was not a budgeted item, it exceeds your budget, this comes out of your collected city sales and use tax, that's restricted just to y'all? And, okay.
He could probably absorb it with the budget that he's currently operating with, but we go with the philosophy of winning out, jumping out, making a resolution, that way it'll be...
That number large purchase, I wanted to talk to Council about.
Yep.
It's like a trolling motor, morder?
Kinda.
Twelve Gs? I make a motion, we pass this resolution.
Second.
Motion, second to pass resolution.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Thank you, chief, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, move on to council forum. Gentlemen?
Mayor, can you give us a...
Oh, I'm sorry, department reports and questions, I'm sorry.
Okay.
From council, sorry, sorry, sorry. I know, I know. So, department heads are here, you see, you got any questions, gentlemen, for these folks?
Street sweeper, has that been operating?
Street sweeper?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know what the routine is.
We don't operate as much this time of year, because we're mowing so much, and when we operate, we're, we're trying to get the lead, because we're, we're trying to get, uh, but...
You got a place that needs it? Well, I've just noticed a few places here in town, I haven't, I've been going through town pretty early in the morning, if I live. Dirt, yeah.
Yeah, they're...
Gravel, gravel.
Look for long lawns too, while you're going.
They're out mowing before, before most people are out being, on the driveways and...
Mr. Maker, I'd say if you do see something like that, to let us know.
Just let me know.
All are at Jeff or us, or one, and we...
Something we can make a special offer.
Yeah, Danielle could drive it. Did I say that out loud? Wow. Okay. Anything else from any department head?
Well, now she's...
Uh, council forum.
My only complaint is something Danielle said a while ago.
You were gonna complain?
No, something she's, I'm complaining about something she said a while ago.
Okay.
Well, she mentioned she's wearing a bunch of hats.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure, I mean, her salary is tax dollars, citizens, and she's talking about doing a bunch of stuff, uh, for the municipal league. I don't know how, if she was just kidding, or if that was something she does, but I don't know what, I don't know how much stuff would need her to be worried about, since, with your position in municipal league, how that operates. And you can tell me where I'm wrong, I, I have no problem.
No, you're fine, and she can speak for herself too, so, as the president of the municipal league, I am tasked with meetings, more meetings than I've had before, going places. So, her communication with the municipal league has increased, uh...
I just didn't know, maybe they had somebody that would provide you, because even like that position would have a control system.
Well, I, they have Valerie, I can't remember Valerie's title up there, but she, she does that with the league for me, but you can't, she can't do it without Danielle's assistance for me. Danielle's my calendar.
Gotcha.
So, she, it has put more on her, I, I mean, I'm the first to say, to tell you that, and back her up with that. So, more has been put on her, uh, due to that position. And, and as you know, uh, she, so being, being the assistant to the mayor is, is, I know you're not saying this, but it's not a simple task. She has to answer, she is answering the phone, we have somebody that has, that is a receptionist, but she takes complaints, issues, and then relays them to me as she feels that I need to know. So, to answer your specific question, she has certainly got more, uh, task, is that a good way to put it, Danielle? As, as, still my assistant, her role hasn't changed, but me being in that position has put more on her. Yes. So...
I'm just trying to get in front of the What's Up Greenwood crowd on Facebook.
Well, until, and, and I know you're not questioning this necessarily, Mr. Terry, but until someone walks in the shoes of an employee here at City Hall, and Charlotte mentioned it earlier, it seems like we have a lot of people, uh, but for the things that have to get done on a daily basis, it's...
Right.
You may walk in here, and not everybody's, you know, behind the, behind the reins, so to speak, but it's, there's a lot going on, there's a lot going on.
We really don't have a big staff for the amount of activity that we all have to do, for real. So, I mean, and I'm a secretary of that state association now too, and I can tell you, it's an added bunch of work that we've welcomed onto our plate for Greenwood. For Greenwood to, to be...
Noticed.
Mm-hmm. Just support, you know, supported, supporting Arkansas.
So, I want to make something, and you didn't ask this, but now's a good time to do it, probably, because I haven't addressed this much. Being Ar, being the president of the Arkansas Municipal League, I'm gonna be traveling, not extensively, but I'm gonna be going to Washington and different places. And you get to, you also are not required to do that as a past president, but certainly as president, they expect you to. I want to make sure that the public knows that none of that, none of that travel of any kind is on the city of Greenwood. I am paid, or my, all of my expenses, my travel, flights, hotel, is always paid by Arkansas Municipal League. Now, when I go to a, to a comp, or a, a, uh, meeting in Little Rock, which I was doing anyway, before I became president, that's just when you're, when you're involved, you go to Little Rock, that's on the city, you know? But we eat lunch at the convent, at the center, I mean, at the league, uh, so I just want to make sure that the, that the citizens know, citizenry know that my position now with the league is not costing the city. I may not be here every single day, but when I'm not here, I'm acting on behalf of the city of Greenwood in that capacity, so. Just, just for you, for clarification.
President of the municipal league, congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, I was wondering, can you kind of sway the municipal league to kind of get back the, uh, the, some of the code enforcements, or the building codes that, that, you know, that seem like the states are trying to take away from us, as far as, you know, uh, building codes, you know, in the local, yeah?
What's been removed, what we've been strapped to, so as league president, the answer would be no. But I can sit down, and, because I've already do, and I have been for several years now, when I, a member is, as the, on the executive committee, uh, you know, president, I'm, I'm running the meeting. You know, there's a lot of other duties, but I'm running the meeting, so the, the league is constantly, I will tell you, they fight hard, and every, in fact, Danielle goes down there for HR reasons, Charlotte's down there for, for what she does, almost every meeting they have, they, the league goes over legislation. You know, you can't really show up down there, I know the city attorney can probably testify to that, like, you can't be at a meeting down there without hearing legislation, because they want everybody to know. And they send you home, uh, with, in, in, being informed of what's being changed, and more importantly, I think Mr. Bell touched on it this morning, the gentleman and, they're, are nodding their heads, because they go down there. You're informed about what's going on, and you're informed about who's pushing that. And more often than not, as is stated, don't want to get in the weeds, there's some pro, there's somebody that is a somebody, and they're trying to change it for themselves, and it affects the state. Uh, unfortunately, it's, it's, it's might be, it might be good for northwest Arkansas, but it doesn't, it's not great for Greenwood, Arkansas. So, that's, that's a continual thing, uh, I can't tell you that I can get a change, but certainly, as the president, I'll be more informed. I've already gained knowledge that I've never thought I would as a kid, I'm like, who, who would have thought Doug Kinslow would be included in that meeting, but... And I will say too, uh, I've been to National League now twice, I believe, uh, in Washington, or once maybe, I think twice. And even though you may think that's a kind of a, something to go to for vacation, it, it, it is the AML on steroids, and so now you get to hear not just about Arkansas's problems, but you hear from states and how they fixed it, or how they're working toward to, to get it fixed, so. I don't know if that explains, does that sound fair enough, gentlemen, from, you've been down there?
I mean, I have been to meetings.
Very good. You're liable to be president more these days.
Yeah, lots of knowledge down there.
Yeah.
Learn something different.
Every time, yeah.
Just like the lady that spoke, like, one lady, the mayor of two hundred and seventy...
Yes, thank you, yes.
Two point two million dollar grant for her son.
Yeah, and then she spends a hundred and eighteen, she had a budget of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and eighteen thousand goes to mosquito spray. That's Keo, Arkansas.
Yeah.
Pecan capital of the world. We're going there in December.
Fish farm.
Is it a fish farm?
There's a bunch of fish farms.
She bragged about her, her pecan festival, and I won't tell you what the slogan is. But it was pretty cool. So, if that helps with that. Yes, sir.
Different subject.
Yep.
To the old subject, make us look good. The, a citizen called me last week, Rod Blake, okay? And asked me a whole bunch of questions, I said, I don't know the answer to any of that, but I, and I, he said, what are you gonna do about it, you need no answers, and I said, I'll bring it up.
Okay.
So, he'd just come from a meeting, and he was over at Barling and Fort Smith. I don't know exactly what was going on, but they discovered that there's kind of a, he called it a strip pit one time, and then he called it a borrow pit one time, I don't know what the difference is. But he said they'd realized that the contractor over there that was pulling dirt out of the side of a hill or mountain wasn't paying sales tax, and that he wasn't a sales tax remitter. He didn't have a sales tax, Arkansas sales tax ID. So, they were trying to get restitution out of him, and he said, and for, I don't know why he was sitting in the meeting, I don't, it, but anyway, he said, you know, when they, when he started thinking about it, he said, that guy's operating in Greenwood. And I don't know which one he was talking about, I didn't ask too many detailed questions, I don't know if he was talking about the one over by Senior Citizen Center, or the Jacob Burton one, or the other Jacob Burton one, I don't know. I just said, I don't know the answers to any of that, I said, I guess I could go in and look and see if he's, uh, actually has a sales tax... I just said, I don't know the answers to any of that, I said, I guess I could go in and look and see if he's, uh, actually has a sales tax ID, that would first be the start of it. And he said, well, Barling and Fort Smith's going after this guy, and he's operating in Greenwood, and I said, I'll tell you what, Rod, I'll just bring it up. And, uh, so I have brought it up.
You don't know the name, but we could probably figure it out.
I do not know the name. You can call Rod Blake.
I, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, is, what, how does he know he's not paying taxes, what, I missed part of this, I guess?
Well, he wasn't there for that reason, he was probably there for one of the reasons he was here with us that time.
Because if the dirt's not getting dropped off in Greenwood, then he doesn't pay city taxes to us.
Well, I think what the, the pit was actually in Barling, and they're taking it in Chaffey Crossing, and doing stuff in Chaffey Crossing, but the sales tax was not being collected, and if it wasn't being collected, it wasn't being remitted, and then when they started looking at it, he didn't have sales tax ID.
Okay.
And I'm trying to relay what Rod Blake told me the best I can, I could be slightly wrong in some of this.
That's, that's fine.
So, but at the end of it, he said, that guy's operating in Greenwood, I wonder if he's doing the same thing in Greenwood, and I said, I do not know. He said, you, do you know if there's any tax being remitted, and I said, I do not know, he said, do you know if he's got a sales tax ID in Greenwood, and I said, he, it's, it's one sales tax ID, you get it for the state of Arkansas, I mean, I have one. And I said, I do not know.
I, I would.
I said, I'll bring it up.
Okay, so duly noted, we, we can look into it, and I, and without getting too into it. The material that I'm aware of that's moving within the city, for sure, most of it's going to RDOT here, and the new, the bridge in, uh. On the forty-nine bridge, so it's going different ways, so I, I don't know if that's who, I don't know if that's who he's referring to, we, we can look into it.
I'd say the shape, Barling's in, they're turning over wherever rock they can.
Yeah.
Trying to find sales stacks.
Sure. Okay.
We're fixing to be.
Okay. Yes, sir.
What about the old store craft building?
Uh, interesting, uh, situation, so Mister Plummer can get you up to date on, on the actual legal, legal issue of it, I suppose, I can tell you what I know, if, if that's kosher, is that cool?
I can, you can, it doesn't matter.
Okay, so what I, here's what I do know absolutely for sure, is that, uh, and, and he can maybe get, tell you what the last. Legal thing happened, but I received a phone call, uh, from a gentleman. I don't, I don't, I guess it's okay to say his name, I don't, I don't know. What's his name? Lloyd Sumner, Lloyd Sumner, he is a gentleman that has done, he was, did the barracks at Chaffey. Okay, that was his, that's his project, still is, although he has, I think dispersed some of that to other, uh, investors, but that's who that is, if you know him, or if you don't know him, but that, that's kinda IDing him. He called me one day, I, I've known him for a while, and he called me one day and wanted to know, uh, what I could tell him about the, the store craft facility, and I said, here's what I know, our contact with Mister Lewis in California. Uh, told him, uh, the last, uh, court date that we had, two court dates now, and just told him that the judge was allowing Mister, Mister Lewis ninety days to make some improvements on the facility that we had asked him to do. Uh, does that sound right? And then, that ninety days was with, when, when Mister Sumner called me, it was within a week of that ninety days expiring. So, I said, this is where we are, and he said to me, I'm gonna call him if you're okay, I, I mean, I, I said, that's, he said, I'm gonna call Mister Lewis, I'm in, I'm intrigued, so he evidently did. I got a call back from Mister Sumner, Sumter, I believe is how you say it, and said that he had, uh, made a deal with Mister Lewis to make those improvements. And he was gonna start that process, and, and just inform me, and he said, I will keep you up to date on what we're doing, I said, okay, I relayed that information to, uh, our city attorney. I don't think it changed our stance of what, what we were presenting, but, but, so they have made, I wouldn't, I don't know if I call it improvements, they have, they have been on the property, they, Mister Sumner, whoever he's did, whoever he's got working for him, they have enclosed all the windows, covered the windows. Uh, with something, uh, not glass, but they've covered all the broken glass, they've removed the broken glass, covered them, uh, and secured the building, as far as we know, I'm not, I don't think you've been back over there, have you? So, that's, they also started cleaning up brush, not mowing, but cleaning up around the building, uh, they had two giant piles of debris or, or brush to, to burn, and they asked, so it's, it's actually been moved to the back of the facility, we told them. When you get ready to burn it, let us know, so we can be prepared for what you're gonna do, I mean, this gentleman, look, Mister Sumner has been very, uh, forthcoming in what he's doing, what he's trying to do, he informed me. That he's working with Mister Lewis to try to get, he knows my desire for that building and the city, either it's gone, or something happens and it's revenue producing, right? Either that facility or something in its place, and he said he has been visiting with Mister Lewis on that regard, and trying to convince him, I don't want to put words in his mouth, to maybe do that down the road. So. And we did get a check today for, for last year's mowing. This year's mowing, I'm sorry, so we're up to date, I don't know if you knew that.
I did not.
So. So, the amount was, we have continued, I have stopped, I told Mister Sumter on the phone one day, when he said he's gonna be, he was already on site, and I said, so you know, we've, and he knew it, I said, we've been maintaining this, because I can't let that sit there and look like that in the middle of our town, so we have been mowing it, as you all know. And, and, and sending those invoices to Mister Lewis in California, sometimes it takes a while, sometimes it doesn't, but since Mister Sumner has come on the scene, scene, it seems like he's woken up Mister Lewis a little bit, and we got our check today to get us even, we're not mowing it anymore. I told Mister Sumter, I have no intentions of mowing it, so, and I just asked him, I said, are you gonna hire a crew, and he said, we're gonna be handling it, so, I don't know that they mowed it since then, I'm not gonna let it go very long, is it that high? So, we will be sending Mister Lewis a notice, again, through our temporary code enforcement officer, uh, to get that done, I'm not, I'm not gonna not do that, I don't want, just because they buttoned it up, they're not gonna let it, I'm not gonna allow it to look bad. Of course, the, the grass is dying now, but it's still, uh, we're gonna let it do, so that's what I know, Mister Plummer.
Yeah, so if you'll remember, the court entered an order with a, a laundry list of.
Yes.
Of stuff that we want done, to bring that property in compliance with our code. Um, about two weeks before, we had to serve him, first of all, with that order, which was a feat in and of itself, uh, we had to hire a private process server in Los Angeles to go, actually go out and find him. Uh, we finally found him on April fifteenth, and he had a ninety day, uh, deadline to meet, which would've been July fifteenth. Um, and about two weeks before that, he hired another attorney, and then this guy that he's talking about, and then another guy named Charles Lester called my office. Um, kinda positing in the same tone as. Mister Sumner, um, so I'm not sure who it is, it's, it's working, uh, with him, but anyway, uh, I met with the mayor after the fifteenth deadline passed, I got with Danielle, we got all the invoices, I sent a letter to his new attorney. Um, with all the invoices and said, hey, you know, we, we need to get these paid, or we're gonna have to put another lien on it, um, and we need the, the entire list knocked out, and I, I realize you're just now getting to the game, but, um, here's what we need to do, and. I sent that letter on the twenty-fifth, he emailed back and said he'd get back with me, I guess, I guess he got with his client and he paid the bills today. Um, but they still have quite a few items that are not in compliance, they've secured the premises, so I don't think anybody can get in, but we know, I don't think the inside has been brought up to code, I'm sure the roof still leaks. The pump house out on the, the street is a big concern, because we've had catastrophic failures there before, and if we have one there, then our business district's without water.
Right.
Um, so I, I highlighted that in a letter, and said, you know, we need to, that's our next step, um, and he's supposed to be getting back with me, so.
Okay.
At least there's a little progress.
I have a little tiny glimmer of hope that this, this Mister Sumner would be, that would be, could be someone to convince Mister Lewis to make this worthwhile, and he even, and Mister Sumner even said to me, he said, whether, whether the building is removed. Or it's turned into something that's revenue producing for the city, I, I've been in it, we've been in it, it's horrible, it's, it's disgusting, it's, it's bad shape, uh, so, but, and the last thing we want is to just get it. Buttoned up, and then here, we're right back to where we were.
Right.
Uh, so, we're gonna pursue it on any way we can to get.
Well, you mentioned a deadline that we were a week away from with the Mister Lewis guy.
That was, yeah.
I just wanna make sure we're not, his little handyman are coming in here and doing a little bit of dirty work, and putting the hoodwink in us, and then not going ahead and getting this guy for not doing his job. Of cleaning it up, or fixing it, or whatever, or selling it, I know he didn't wanna sell it, he didn't wanna rent it, he just wants it to sit there, I just wanna make sure whenever the time is over, we, 'cause I don't know what, you know, we, we were going to the auction steps a couple of months ago at the courthouse.
And the, and the judge.
Yeah, the judge extenuated that, so at some point, it either needs to happen again, or this guy needs to do something with it.
No, we totally agree.
I would suggest, Mayor, um, that at some point soon, we might get Sonny and or Hunter, uh, see if we can get them access to inspect the inside, because there was a lot on the inside that was not in compliance, and could still pose a health and safety hazard, if not fixed. Even though the button, the outside has been buttoned up, um, there are some problems on the inside of that building that, that really need attention.
Well, it, yeah, I, I totally agree, and, and you know, somebody breaks in, unknowing, puts the thing back, makes it look like it's still buttoned up, if somebody's not checking on it. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, as far as his stance on all that, doesn't seem like anything's changed, I, I don't know that Mister Sumner's gonna be able to convince him of anything, uh, but, it, it, like you said, it was kind of at least something.
Long as we just keep putting liens on the place whenever he's not in compliance, that'll, that'll get some attention.
Yeah, Mister Plummer and I have no, no thought at all of sitting back and.
Right.
Twiddling our thumbs, so.
Cause he just keeps pushing it back, pushing it back.
I'll, I'll send another letter this week to the attorney, it's been.
Okay.
Well, I just don't want us to get complacent, well, they've got it buttoned up, and it looks nice, you know, we, we'll give the guy a break, he's doing a little bit, no, we wanna keep pushing.
The thing is, the court ordered that these things be fixed.
Yeah.
And I know they haven't been fixed, because that house is still sitting out there, hasn't been touched.
Right.
So, the pump house, uh, so my suspicion is that inside the building has probably not been touched. So, um, but the court did order that. We'll stay on topic.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Uh, Mayor, I was wondering, uh, if you could give us an update on the, uh, the trail tunnel, if the RDOT's come back.
Yeah, so, it's back in RDOT's hands, uh, in their corner, I guess we, we issued everything that, when Jason, we, we talked, and I think I informed you guys last time, that, that what he was wanting was something back from us to say, we're, we're in agreement with this, so what we sent him was. Charlotte was able to provide the minutes from said meeting, and y'all's vote on it to move forward, so that's back to Jason with RDOT, uh, they've got it, and I've not heard from Jason, but according to him. He said, he said, I might need a resol, we didn't actually do a resolution, if you remember, he said, that might be needed, but until I found out it is, we're gonna, we're gonna start. I, just for kicks, I drove with the, over there today to see if they were breaking that, cutting that out, and they're not, because, one, they're gonna, using that road to, to enter back over there, so, uh, I may call him this week. Yeah, so it takes RDOT, you know, back and forth, back and forth, to get, get all this. Yeah, we're, we're waiting to hear back from him.
Who's, who's Jason?
Jason's with RDOT, he's our. District engineer.
He's the district engineer, he resides in this district?
Yes, yeah, he, his office is up at Chaffey Crossing.
Okay.
He's the one that gave me, remember the, the little note I read to you, that Jason says this is what this could cost?
Mm-hmm.
That was from him, and, and you guys did the resolution to, to approve that up to three something, whatever it was, because he said two fifty, and he was thankful that you allowed that extra, whatever it was.
Yeah.
But he said, I don't think it'll cost that, but, anyway, so we're waiting to hear back, it, it's in their corner, as far as Greenwood's concerned, we've said, we want this, let's do it. On that note, we're, we're changing our plans, I've changed the subject a little bit here, but we're changing our plans, we met, met with a young lady from, uh, school today, can't think of her name. Miss Dixon, uh, that, who, who, she's kinda like, she took Bill, Miss Skaggs' place on, on planning the trail, the Trail of Treats. So, we didn't wanna mess with any of the, I mean, whether they, they're not gonna have the tunnel ready for us by then, for sure, and to ask them to make that accessible now, they did it for us last year, because it was pretty flat. If we ask them to do it now, there'd be a lot of material, so we're gonna move our Trail of Treats to Bell Park, uh, had Casey in the room, and, and stir, she's in there, and we're gonna move that Trail of Treats up to Bell Park. We hope it's just one year, because we wanna get back on the trail when that tunnel's put in, so we're gonna go up there and utilize the promenade for the Trail of Treats, and talked about the logistics, the parking, and all that stuff, so, that's the plan for the Trail of Treats this year. Sorry, and, yeah, how, so typically, I have always been very stubborn about not moving Halloween, because it's Halloween, and you leave it alone, and everybody knows what it is, but this year, it's Friday night, home team, home football game in Greenwood, Arkansas, not a good idea. Senior night, so we're gonna do it, we're gonna celebrate it Thursday night, because that's when Mrs. Dixon said she could get help from the school. So, we're gonna do it tonight early.
Thank you for staying on that highway department deal.
On what now?
The, the tunnel.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I, I think it's great, I think it's gonna be, I think it'll be another cool thing in Greenwood, Arkansas, for sure.
Thank you for staying on that, uh, little pull-off.
Hey, by the way, I'm sorry, were you gonna say something? You're just signing.
Turning lane.
Mister Purvis, uh, we, we, our discussion the other night at the budget study session, we talked about everybody getting together and being on the same page of our renewal of our sales tax in twenty twenty-six, so, uh, we asked Mister Bob to get that committee, the Economic Development Committee together, and kinda get a plan, so we'll be coming back. Right, do you have anything else for that?
We started paperwork today to get the.
To get it on. Yeah. I've asked the department heads, well, I've asked them several months ago, and they've, some of them's already provided a little bit of information of what they've done, what they know in their tenure, and then go back another, go back twenty years, and tell me what has been done with that, that money for every department, street, overlay, fire, everybody, PD, parks for sure, so we'll have that to.
So, it's important to say what we've done, but it's more important to say what we're gonna do. And I know that you get feedback about the sunset, now, well, we can't ever do anything, you know, it, because it may require some long-term financing and all that, well, the department heads. Or the commission, department heads, whoever, whichever, whatever it affects, if it's something that they're gonna need long-term financing, then it needs to be done early in the, in the election. And they need to, if that's the case, and I don't know, Parks is gone, no, Parks is back there, Parks, that's something that, right after the budget's done, they need to get with Tom. And sit down with Tom, let Tom do accurate projections of what funding you would have, and I'm just saying, if, if y'all have a project that you're gonna need to borrow money, it needs to be done early in, not when it, the, you know, about the time it's gonna sunset. So, you need to realize that, uh, Jeff needs to realize that, so if you're gonna do some financing, y'all've gotta get with Tom, and let Tom give you ac- accurate projections of what's gonna happen, and especially if it was gonna need a, you know, a bond. That bond probably needs to be passed at the time we're renewing it. So, those are things you can't dump on Tom the last minute, and everything needs to be in front of the council in, we said, May. So, you have ten months. Nine months. Cause the, the ordinance needs to be in front of the council in May, so y'all can't dump all this on Tom in March and April, you need to be visiting with Tom by January. Tom, does that sound correct?
Very reasonable.
Okay.
Matter of fact, the budget, uh, worksheets are being prepared now, and they will be distributed for September first.
So.
Cause that was your projected date, you wanted them to get done, so we.
Cause that was your projected date you wanted them to get done, so we wouldn't go so long to do the budget.
They can be working on it now.
Yeah.
But they'll get their official document by the end of this month.
So streets, parks, fire, that ordinance is gonna be in front of the council in May. Cause we got three months. We're not gonna go in there and rush it. All your planning needs to be happening in January with the direction of Tom because he can give you accurate projections of what this is gonna produce in the next ten years. What you can realistically borrow if they're needing to borrow money to do something. And then tell the citizens, I'm going to do this and we gotta do it. Let, we're gonna do what we s- tell them we're gonna do. Uh, so just making sure y'all don't wake up one day and know it's gonna be spring and wake up one day and miss winter or I don't.
Are you talking directly to Chief Brennan? I'm sorry.
I'm talking to all three of them. And.
Little inside there.
Just, I just want planning. I just want planning to happen, so.
Yes, sir.
There, there are political considerations by being on a general ballot and then being in and off. I just don't want them dumping stuff on Tom at the last minute saying, we're gonna need a bond to build ten miles of trail. I don't know.
Yeah.
It's a day and a half, okay.
We talk about this amongst ourselves quite a bit. This is not our first conversation about it. Probably every other month.
It gets brought up in there. Our very educational department had meetings, right, guys?
Just like this meeting.
I know it's Cor- it's Council Cor, but I will take an opportunity too. Frank is here. Mr. Frank, poke him.
He's on the phone.
Is he on the phone? Mr. Frank, I'm acknowledging you being here tonight. I know, well, come on up, whatever you need to do. This, if you've not met Frank, Frank delivers all the meals at the senior citizen center.
Thank you for that.
How old are you, sir, now?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one.
I'll be eighty-two in September.
Okay, so I just wanna acknowledge you and, and you know, I appreciate you, uh, in what you do and you do it day in and day out, out there.
You know, I enjoy what I do. I look forward to it.
I know, I know.
I wanna work every day.
Yes, sir.
Glad we finally got that guy to that, uh, new center or so.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna see so I could say.
Yes, sir. You're not here for a commercial, but I appreciate you. I mean, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to put you on a commercial, is what I'm trying to say. Frank may be slipping a little bit because he asked me for my autograph the other day. So there's that. No, I was kidding.
It's gonna be worth something someday.
That's right. You know, I love you. I, I appreciate you. Thank you for what you do every single day. Uh, and, and Frank gets to see and notices, so I know it's not us and I've made that clear on my, I did a little, recently did a little video to bring some folks up to date on what we're doing and I continue, plan on doing it more on different projects. And I mentioned that the funding has been cut to the center. As everybody in this room probably knows, it's, it's federal. It's not, it's not the city of Greenwood. Uh, so they're, they're in a bit, a little bit of a bind as far as cutting hours. They've already had to cut some hours. They've had to, the, the tragic is that they've had to cut meals out. They no longer serve, and this is not just Greenwood. This is all around the region. Deanna's in charge of all these. And so this is happening and they've, they've been cut on their funding some. So they've, they're still open on Friday at the new center, but they're not serving a meal because they don't have the funds to do it. Uh, and I know Frank has been tasked with not getting to go to every single house that he used to deliver a meal. And I can't imagine what that feels like when you have to go and say, listen, I, I, there's only four meals this week instead of five or six. So, uh, if, if you don't mind, counsel, uh, reach out to your, your, uh, legislatures and remind them, I've done it. I know Sonny does it. So remind those folks of what's going on.
State or federal?
It's federal. It's a little, I think it's both, but it's, I think it's federal more than anything. Uh, I, I know the governor recently gave some funds, who was that telling me something today? It was good news. To the fair, to the fair, to the, all the fairgrounds or local fairs or whatever, whatever that is. So if that could be also considered to, for providing food, uh, to these folks that don't have a hot meal. I know y'all are doing a frozen meal instead of all these hot meals to, to hold them over the weekend. And Deanna Rice, I can, I can testify because I was invited, the Levacca mayor is the chair, is the chairman of the committee of SRCA. And I, I got invited to go sit in on a meeting in Deanna, this is a couple of months ago when they first heard of their, their cuts. And she was in tears of what she was having to do to notify clients, if you will, that they're not getting, uh, th- these meals. So I have encouraged Lisa to be here and I expect, highly expect her to ask us and you guys to consider an increase on, on that. We've not, they've not asked the city of Greenwood, I don't, since you've been here, Tom, for an increase on, on what we provide. I know we got them a new building and I know we're doing more things for them, but they've not asked for an increase in those, that, that program in, in a long time. So in, as you all know, the cost of food has gone up, uh, in, in six years or seven years since they've asked. So, anyway, that's my commercial on that. Anything else from the council? I'm sorry I took your time.
I'm making a motion we adjourn.
Second of motion, second. Thank you all very much. Appreciate you. Mike Freeze. The old fish farm.
Uh, South Alono from Los Inman.
That's what I like.
Well, and he's done a lot.
Oh, yeah.
To put us around the rock.
Got me cornered now.